We will be starting in about thirty seconds. Okay, good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, November 5th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper? Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Goodelia?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Okay. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening, we have a presentation on the Marion pavement management program. Is that engineering?
Yes, that's me, Your Honor.
Oh, hello.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I have a brief update on the pavement management program. I'll just start with a basic overview of the program. This is objective 4.1.1 of our strategic plan, and I am the lead on this project. Basically, the program starts with data collection that is provided by the Iowa DOT. Initially, we provide the DOT with our GIS street network mapping and pavement history data. And then their contractor, currently it's Pathway, which you can see in the vehicle there, drives and surveys all of our paved roadways. This occurs every two years. And the next scheduled survey for their survey is 2021. So you'll notice this vehicle driving about town next summer. Next slide, please. The DOT and Pathway then compile all the collected data and distribute to the city. We are provided with raw tabular data such as cracking, roughness, rutting of the streets. They also provide us with a website viewer that's shown here with images that we can see the the actual physical conditions of the street when they provided that survey data. It may be tough to tell, but that pavement view section in the middle, the gray section, we can actually pick up and see on a normal monitor the extent of the cracking that could be occurring within that pavement slab itself. Next slide, please. Using the survey data they provide, pavement condition index values are assigned. I'm going to refer to that as PCI from here on out. These values are developed using the DOT standard PCI equation based on the survey data that's obtained. This equation has been adjusted by the DOT for specific use on city streets versus their standard equation that they use for major highways. The PCI values are provided on a zero to 100 scale with zero being poor and 100 being perfect. The image that's provided on the right is the 2019 PCI values that were surveyed. The greens represent streets that are closer to 100, and the reds and yellows and oranges represent streets that are closer to zero. As should be expected, the greens are mostly located in our newer developed areas with the reds and oranges in our older part of town. Next slide, please. From there, our data is imported into our pavement management infrastructure program, which is called DTS. In DTS, I assign pavement treatment types. For example, crack ceiling, HMA overlays, or a full reconstruction. The treatments are also assigned an associated cost based on recent the recent bidding environment for those types of treatments. I then developed treatment triggers such as, let's perform an HMA overlay when the PCI value is between 40 and 60, or let's perform a reconstruction on a roadway if the PCI value falls below 20. With the treatments and triggers in place, I can develop different budget scenarios using the DTS programs. The budget scenarios can be provided to illustrate how future funding levels will impact the quality of our roadway infrastructure. When developing these funding levels, my recommendation is to have an established targeted average PCI level set by city council. This level can be set to improve our roadway infrastructure or simply to maintain the current average levels that we have today. With all that said, I'm sure everyone in the room does not have a good sense of what a 30 PCI is versus a 70 PCI. That's why I'm requesting a little bit of homework from city council. In your presentation memo for this subject, there's a list of city streets that I would like for city council to drive and just provide your own observations. Please assign your own street rating on a scale you decide, zero to 100, and also guess your general thoughts on that city street segment. The intent is to provide a wide range of street conditions to help illustrate to you what these PCI values represent in actual field conditions. Using this survey data from city council, I'll be able to provide more applicable budget scenarios based on that information. It will be able to present this information to you for discussion at a future work session on the effort to establish a targeted average PCI level prior to our upcoming budget season. With that, I'll entertain any questions?
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Renee.
When is the homework due?
In a month. Be all right? Give it to me by about the first of December.
Good question. Any other? Yes, go ahead, Collette.
Yeah, so thank you for this. This is really helpful. I'm excited about the homework, actually, and I'm happy that I have four weeks to complete the homework. Thank you for that. Is there any part of this work, and I'll see, I'm not sure if I'm going to ask the question right, but from a long-term planning perspective and thinking about this strategically, right, we have these needs, immediate needs, but is there a way for us, sort of, I think about it from a deferred maintenance perspective, to sort of look at it over the next five, 10, 15 years to build a budget around making sure, right, our streets don't get to a level of whatever we think is not a good level to be at, right? Is there data that gives you a way to build an equation that would give you that information?
Yes, with the budget scenarios I mentioned, I can import whatever funding level we want to set forth. I can even break it out into, let's say, currently we have a million-dollar HMA overlay program. We could increase that 1.5 or decrease it to half a million dollars a year and maybe increase our reconstruction budget up conversely with that and be able to show how that will affect our PCI. We can do it on a year-by-year basis going forward as well. On the slides there, you can see I just have it set for 10 years for now, just for an example, but we can break this out to 15 years in the future and, you know, we can go from maybe a million dollars in funding one year to 10 million the next, back down to five, just depending on our funding available and, you know, maybe a durachio comes through and we need to change some things about how we're funding for the next year until we can get caught up, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, go ahead, Renee.
Just one more. So obviously, the data you're going to get back from us will be subjective because it will be our opinion, but do you have a rubric or something that we could have a few bullet points on in terms of how we're rating these, like what, you know, like erosion on the side or cracks in the middle or, you know, is there any kind of, you just want us to arbitrarily assign it a number, or are there any parameters that we could help guide our opinions?
Yeah, I guess I didn't want to guide your opinion for you initially with this little bit of homework. I just wanted to to kind of have everybody drive the same roads and come up with their own thoughts and maybe when you look at it, maybe you give something a 60 and it's a 70. Well, you're not really that far off, but if if you're maybe you're not realizing the amount of distress at each transverse contraction joint that is impacting the overall PCI number, I can kind of explain it to you that way, once I get the data back. I just kind of wanted to have you guys provide a unslanted opinion on what you're driving, just so we can basically start a discussion. I didn't want to just present 10 budget scenarios and have you pick a PCI based off of, targeted PCI based off of that without having any real sense of what we're discussing.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
I'm not competitive, but are you going to tell us who did the best on the homework? Maybe the fastest?
Yeah. I will not grade you on it.
I think this is a really positive, positive step, and, you know, obviously, streets and the condition of streets is one of the things that's the most concerned and that we hear the most about from residents. So having a methodical way to be able to assess the condition of streets and to show residents, you know, here's where it is and just it's going to be very helpful, I think, and it's going to help us all do our job better. So I'm really excited about this. Do you have any questions, Will? Okay, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much for your work on it. Okay. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for comments from the public regarding topics that are listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Items that are part of a public hearing will will provide an opportunity for comments at that time. Items that are not a part of a public hearing will not generally be available for comment from the public. So this is the time to do that. Do we have anyone who has sent in comments prior to the meeting?
I have not received any, and there's none waiting on Zoom.
Okay. Might wait just a few seconds here to see if anyone sends in a message. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which will include items A1 through G1 and resolution numbers 28955 through 28980.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through G1, resolutions 28955 through 28980. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Pro Tem for the next item.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Items A1 through E4, including resolutions 28981 to 28984.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for the, to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention. Items A1 through E4, resolutions 28981 through 28984. Are there any of these items that you wish to discuss? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention, please say aye.
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 Those against, please say no. The consent agenda is approved. I move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda under Administrative Services.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28985, approving professional service agreement with Title Basin Government Consulting LLC for services related FEMA Public Assistant Grant and Durachio Disaster Recovery.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28985, approving the professional services agreement with Title Basin Government Consulting LLC for services related to the FEMA Public Assistance Grant and Durachio Disaster Recovery. Discussion?
Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28985, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28986, approving title basin task order number one related to FEMA Public Assistance and Hazard Mitigation Grants Management.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Atkins to approve resolution number 28986, approving title basin task order number one related to FEMA Public Assistance and Hazard Mitigation Grants Management. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28986, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28987, approving partial payment number two to Southern Disaster Recovery for the Emergency Debris Removal Services in the amount of $2,613,105.04. Second.
It has been it was moved, has been moved by Councilmember Atkins, seconded by Councilmember Brandt to approve resolution number 28987, approving the partial payment number two to Southern Disaster Recovery for Emergency Debris Removal Services in the amount of $2,613,105.04. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28987, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28988, approving partial payment number two to Wendling Quarries Incorporated for the final disposition of storm debris in the amount of $221,523.34.
Okay. I'm actually going to move this over to the Mayor Pro Tem, sorry.
Second.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28988 for the partial payment to Wendling Quarries for disposition of storm debris for $221,523.34. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28988, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. I move the main, oh, the next one too. Okay.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28989, approving partial payment number three to Wendling Quarries, Inc. for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of $273,261.57.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28989 for payment number three to Wendling Quarries for disposition of storm debris. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28989, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved with one abstention. I move the meeting back to the mayor.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28990, approving contract with Maron Construction Company, Incorporated to repair structural damage to the police station from the 2020 Durachio storm in the amount of $86,455. Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Atkins, seconded by Councilmember Brandt to approve resolution number 28990, approving the contract with Maron Construction Company to repair structural damage to the police station for the Durachio damage in the amount of $86,455. Discussion?
Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28990, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next, under engineering, we have a number of public hearings. Or is this just one public hearing? Or are they going to be all separate?
Your Honor, we're essentially going to do one public hearing for all of these topics. They all require us to have a public hearing over the plans, but we can do them all at the same time.
They can be together. Okay. That's helpful. Okay, so at this time, we're going to open the public hearing for the Marion Public Library New Building Project for the following items. Marion Public Library New Building Project Decorative Metal. Marion Public Library New Building Project General Trades. Marion Public Library New Building Project Glass and Glazing. Marion Public Library New Building Project Flooring. Marion Public Library New Building Project Food Service Equipment. Marion Public Library New Building Project Convaying Systems. Marion Public Library New Building Project Fire Suppression. Marion Public Library New Building Project Electrical. Marion Public Library New Building Project HVAC. Marion Public Library New Building Project Painting. Marion Public Library New Building Project Plumbing. Marion Public Library New Building Project Roofing and Architectural Sheet Metal. Marion Public Library New Building Project Unit Masonry. And Marion Public Library New Building Project Gypsum Board and Acoustic Ceilings. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any kind of presentation on this or who would be doing that?
Your Honor, I can give you a quick synopsis. So because this is being done as a construction manager, each of these would be typically subcontractors if we were to do it as a typically let engineering project, but because each of these is a separate contract with the city, they're each broke into their subcategories. And so then there are several prime contractors that Bush Construction would then oversee to make sure that they are doing them per specification.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment or who have sent in comments on any of these items?
I have not received any.
Either in favor or in opposition?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll note for the public, for the record, that no comments have been received through this meeting or ahead of time, correct? And Mike, did you receive any comments outside this meeting?
I have not.
Or your staff?
No.
And then we keep this open until December 17th, 2020, when we get the bids in for each one of these packages.
So we're not going to close the public hearing? We're just taking comments today?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll note for the public that the public hearings on all of these items will remain open for public comment until December 17th? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So members of the public are welcome to send in their comments prior to that time. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is a public hearing regarding the 2020 10th Street and Central Avenue 10th Avenue Intersection Improvements Project. The public hearing is now open. Mike, do you have a presentation?
Yes, so this is the conversion of the 10th and 10th Central Avenue intersection that's currently a signalized intersection into a mini roundabout. We will receive four bids. If you can go to the next slide, Terrell. We received four bids, the little bid coming from Ratchee Construction at $543,834.94, which was 88.72% of the engineer's estimate. There's a late start date and an early start date, which means basically they have to start on the 6/21/21. That is currently when school is not supposed to be in session. We may have to adjust that date depending on what happens with the current pandemic. There are 35 working days allotted to the project with $1,500 per day in liquidated damages because we are completely closing down this intersection to build this roundabout. So it's a pretty quick project to get done. There is some traffic safety improvement program money that's being allocated from the DOT as a portion of this project as well.
Okay, thank you, Mike. At this time, we will ask for comments from the public, either in favor or against on this, on this item. Has anything been received either during this meeting or prior?
I have not received anything.
Okay, and Mike, have you received anything or your staff?
Just from the DOT concurring with the award.
Okay. So we'll note that for the public record, and we'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28991, accepting bids and awarding contract to Ratchee Construction Company regarding the 2020 10th Street and Central Ave, 10th Ave Intersection Improvements Project in the amount of $543,834.94.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28991, accepting bids and awarding contract to Ratchee Construction Company regarding the 2020 10th Street, Central Ave, 10th Ave Intersection Improvements Project in the amount of $543,834.94. Discussion?
Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28991, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next is a public hearing regarding amendment to Chapter 162 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to the Electrical Code. We'll open the public hearing. Gary, are you with us?
I am.
You have a presentation?
Yeah, so like we, like I talked about Monday night, we're currently using the 2017 National Electrical Code with a few amendments of our ordinance. We're going to, we're asking to update that to the 2020. Again, the code, we update them every three years. Again, the code, we update them every three years. We try and get new technology into our, into our code. A lot of times, we're mitigating hazards that have come through the code. And the code changes a lot every three years. A lot of times, they'll, they'll try and bring things into the code. They don't want to overwhelm the homeowners when they're having to, or the industrial, commercial end of it. Where they don't want to make them financially burden on, on the, on the code. So they'll bring things in gradually. They'll bring it in every three years, they'll bring in a little more, so. And that has happened this year too. They're bringing more items in that they've, they've talked about for the last six to nine years. They've been talking about getting these things in there. The code has been reviewed by our Construction Code Review Board. It's been reviewed by the State Electrical Board. And it has been reviewed by legal, so I think we're, we're all set. The amendments that we have in here are pretty much geared toward the multifamily housing. And it's one of our areas that we feel that we need to make our community a little safer. When we're talking about, you know, having rental units and some of the stuff that goes on in, in some rentals. We want to make sure that we're not causing or adding to the issues with, with an unsafe building, so. I'm open for questions if you have any.
Hey, thank you.
Sure.
At this time, we have public comments on this measure. This is the time for members of the public to comment to the, to the council either in favor or in opposition to this measure. Have we received any comments?
I have not received any.
Okay, Gary, have you or your department received any comments outside the meeting?
I, I have not received any comments, and we have sent this to the Home Builders Association and all the electrical contractors, so. I would think that if there was anybody that had concerns about it, they would have, would have brought it up. We have not heard anything.
Okay, have any comments come in at this time during the meeting?
I have not received any.
Okay, please note for the record that no comments were received. We'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-dash-twelve, amending chapter one sixty-two of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to the Electrical Code, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-dash-twelve, amending chapter one sixty-two of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to the Electrical Code. Initial consideration. Discussion? Any questions for Gary? Okay, we'll vote, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty-dash-twelve, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The motion has been approved. We have another public hearing at this time on the naming of an unnamed street, Tibiel Court, located south of Highway one fifty-one, west of Sixty-Second Street. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any presentation on this?
I think the, Tom covered it pretty well at the work session, I think the memo is pretty thorough.
Just for purposes of the public hearing, if you could just give us a synopsis, please.
Sure, sure. This street, the street in question was dedicated to the city of Marion from the state of Iowa, some, it's a frontage road in, in the DOT right of way. When we took on that road, it was unnamed. We now have Quick Star on the corner, along with some development potential to the west. And we, we obviously need a street to, a street name to do that. Looking at all the options, Beal Street was a family in this, early settlers in the Lynn County Marion area. And that's the street name we came up with. It's only, it's barely a half a block long street, it will not go any further than pretty much what you see there on the, on the image.
Okay, thank you, Dave. At this time, we are open for comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition of this measure. Have we received any comments outside the meeting or during the meeting?
I have not received any.
Dave, have you or your department received any comments outside the meeting?
None.
Okay. I assume no comments are being sent in at this time. Okay. All right, we'll note for the public record that no comments have been received from the public, and we'll close the public hearing. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number two eight nine nine two, approving the naming of an unnamed street to Beal Court located south of Highway one fifty-one and west of Sixty-Second Street.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight nine nine two, approving the naming of an unnamed street to Beal Court located south of Highway one fifty-one and west of Sixty-Second Street. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight nine nine two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. I will turn over the, excuse me one sec, I'll turn over the meeting to mayor pretend for this item. Thank you.
Your honor, I move to receive and file correspondence from Medco regarding support of the Marion Municipal Airport Economic Analysis.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second for the motion to receive and file correspondence from Medco regarding support for the Marion Municipal Airport Economic Analysis. Any discussion? Renee?
Yeah, I read the support, you know, it was brief and clear. Curious, and it's related to the next item as well. Tuesday, we talked about, I had suggested finding out what the cost was, which I'm going to ask when we get to the next item. And then if we would reach out to the flight school or the FBO to participate, and I believe council member asked if Medco would be considered as well, so they didn't mention anything in the letter. I'm wondering if Medco is, was approached to perhaps contribute toward the the cost of the study since they would benefit from it.
Lon, any comments for that?
We would anticipate doing that as part of our discussions around developing the scope of work because I think we know what, from the city's standpoint, what we would like to see in an economic impact study, but that might be different or could potentially be tweaked with Medco's involvement or with the private property owners' involvement. So it would be part of developing the scope of work to have those discussions about potential cost sharing.
So the scope of work will just be developed in-house, there won't be a cost associated other than staff time? That's what we're approving for the next one, and that's?
That's what we would anticipate, you know, look going out and seeing what other agencies have done for RFPs, how they've approached putting those together.
Okay, thank you.
But not to get, not to get ahead of the game, but I think on the next item, that's where we'll talk about coming up with the estimated cost as well. Is that correct, Lon?
Yeah, it is.
Scope of work as well as the estimated cost and timeframe?
Yeah, because how extensive you want to get, how detailed you want to get, that's all part of the scope of work, but that also affects bottom line cost. How robust we expect the study to be.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this motion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving the motion to receive and file the correspondence from Medco, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved with one abstention. And you want me to take, oh yeah, next one as well, so, next one?
Your honor, make a motion directing staff to provide a scope of work to complete an airport economic impact study.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to direct staff to provide a scope of work to complete an airport economic impact study. Again, this will be including the scope of work, timeframe, and estimated cost for that study. Any more comments or questions related to this? Do we know about how long that may take just to come up with that, out of curiosity, do we?
I would have to confer with planning and engineering to talk about timeline. But I would also expect that once we have it, we might present one or two options to the city council before anything would go further.
Makes sense. Okay, any more comments or questions about this?
Yeah, I do.
Renee, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I want to go on record because I think everybody kind of knows where I stand at the airport and the fact that we just really have a runway. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, even though it will take some staff resources, but I'm very curious. Unless we were to develop out the ALP, and I know we had a presentation recently about how far we want to go with this, when as a city, I just don't feel like this is a place that we should be focusing many resources. So again, because this is just kind of the tip, and we'll bring back some more information for discussion, I'm, I'm going to go along with it, but I'm not a huge fan of doing a whole lot more in this area. Just wanted to be noted, thanks.
Yep. Understood. Any more comments or questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approving the motion directing staff to provide a scope of work to complete an airport economic impact study, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. And I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Your honor, I make a motion directing staff to provide recommendations on the regulation of self-storage in the BR Regional Business Zoning District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve motion directing staff to provide recommendations on the regulation of self-storage in the BR Regional Business Zoning District. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, we have one no and the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine nine three, approving payment to Bush Construction in the amount of forty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and six cents for the library building project.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to approve resolution number two eight nine nine three, approving payment to Bush Construction in the amount of forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and six cents for the library building project. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight nine nine three, please say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed, say no. Motion is approved. This time, we have another discussion time. Oh no, I'm sorry, first we have the storm response update. City manager?
Thank you, your honor. As you've been around town, you've probably seen that we are very, very close to having all of the storm debris picked up from the right of way. I'm sure there'll probably be a few stragglers that will show up out there. But at this point, we've been, been able to reduce the fleet down to about a half a dozen trucks that are still available in town just to go out and pick up those onesies or twosies that might get called in that show up. We've gotten the construction debris fairly well cleaned up. We did receive bids for the cleanup of the waterways around the city, and we're in the process of going through and evaluating those now. Public Services is working with legal just to make sure they're fairly complicated bid packages, that everything is as you expect, and that we've got a clear picture that everybody was indeed bidding apples to apples on those, so that we can bring those to the city council. I would also expect that by the next time we come to the city council, we are in the process now on the internal side of investigating interim financing for the cost of the cleanup. It's going to exceed our ability to be able to use internal dollars to do that, so we're looking at alternatives with our bond council for some type of a short-term note or line of credit. The main wild card is exactly, is exactly how long it takes FEMA to reimburse us from the point at which we put paperwork in to the point at which we actually received the check. You know, if it was thirty days, that's one thing, if it's ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, that's another. But we'll have bills coming in in the meantime, and we want to make sure that we can pay those and keep the contractors moving so that we don't lose any momentum with the cleanup. So I would expect that the council will start to see some action on that. But as we get clarity on what the cost is for the waterway, we'll also be able to bring you our financial plan for how we're going to make sure that we can cover the city share.
Okay, questions for Lon? Oh, go ahead, Steve.
So just a question in general, I've had a couple of people ask me that if they're still taking down some trees and they put that out at the curb, I know the trucks aren't making regular rounds. So if they're still doing that right now, are they supposed to call Public Services? And they give them their address, and will that still be picked up by the, the southern disaster recovery?
As long as we haven't closed the project, we can still continue to clean storm-related debris up. I would suggest that either they contact the, just the city hall general number, and we can relay it out, or contact Public Services directly. I don't know if Ryan has a firm date for what the cutoff would be.
Like I said, along with the projects.
Yep, but what we have to be careful with is that when it comes to FEMA reimbursement, you have to start closing projects in order to be able to get dollars back.
That's fine, but how do, how will the citizens know that that project is closed or there is a cutoff? And that that opportunity is no longer available?
We would put publicity out to let everybody know, once a final date is selected, to notify the public, and certainly the city council as well.
All right.
There will be a final date, I mean, it's not just going to be?
Has to be, or we can't get reimbursed.
Right, right, understood.
And I think people will understand that too, I mean, you know. Yeah, go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. Do we have any idea of when that would be? And I'm only wondering if we could, you know, time it for like the next quarterly publication that goes out to every single resident? Because I think people really do, we have a lot of great information in there about programming and articles. So I feel like that would be a really good spot to reach people if we had a date by that time to coordinate.
We are working on the Marion Messenger now. I'll get together with Public Services and see if we have a date that looks like it would potentially work, and then we could push it out with that publication. That's a good idea.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions for Lon? All right, thank you. Thanks to everyone for the continued great work. I received another email today from a resident saying how pleased they were with the cleanup, so. Okay, now we'll go on to the public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from the public on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. Do we have any comments either sent in ahead of time and, or anyone?
I have not received any.
Okay. We'll wait a minute or so here to see if anyone would like to send in a comment at this time. Okay, all right. Seeing that there are no messages coming in, we will proceed, if any, if any do come in, look, we can always circle back. We'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Mr. Sternad.
Thank you, your honor. The only thing I wanted to do was express my condolences to council member Grant Harbor and his family for the passing of his father. Other than that, I have nothing, your honor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Renee?
Um, yeah, two quick things. I just wanted to say that I am really liking the agenda management software, website, links, blah, blah, blah. So I don't know if that's the exact right term, but I think it's super easy, easy to find on the website. I've been looking at it on my phone this evening, and it's just nice and accessible, and we're saving a lot of trees. So that's, that's really good. And the second thing I just thought was funny, we get updates from Lenmar for Nina every other day or so, and they, they highlight the new stuff in there. And the other day, there was a highlight that said they're instituting roundabouts in the high school for traffic flow in some of the heavily traversed areas like the Four Corners. And I just laughed, and I thought, how Marion of Lenmar to be putting with, you know, I guess they're marking with tape or something. Yeah, and like the Four Corners, there's a roundabout now or whatever, and I just thought I would share that since that's something that we talk about here a lot. And other than that, that's all I have, thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to see a picture or video of how that's working. Yeah, I'd like to see a picture or video of how that's working, you know? Okay, thank you. Colette?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Will? Steve? Okay, I also would like to add my condolences to council member Harper and his family. Just would note of interest, yesterday I participated in the mayor's roundtable. It's an annual thing that CRBT does. And it's an opportunity to share all the all the things that are that are going on in the city. Obviously, derecho and the the pandemic were a big part of the discussion, a lot of the sources of the questions, but I also got to share all the projects that are still ongoing in our city and how well our city did with the cleanup and lots of positive news, so. And with that, I just want to add an encouragement to everyone to please be safe and to wear masks and protect each other. We have a duty to each other as a community to protect each other. I think I was top in the nation now in terms of new cases and so would just encourage everyone to to do what we can right now to mitigate the spread so that we have some chance of enjoying the holidays that are upcoming. So thank you and have a good weekend. Meeting is adjourned.